The signed I regular meeting for Visirus City Council for January the 2nd, 2018 is called to order. Please stand and join me in a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call of the 2016-2017 council.
McKiever.
Here.
Ross.
Here.
Wireball.
Here.
Trucca.
Here.
Sack.
Here.
Awork.
Piper.
Here.
And I need a motion to excuse Mr. Awork from this meeting.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Piper and second by Mr. Trucca to excuse Mr. Awork. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passed. Before you, you have the minutes of the December 19th, 2017 regular meeting. I need a motion to accept those minutes.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Sack, second by Mr. McKiever to accept the minutes for December the 19th, 2017. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion passed. Minutes are accepted. This is where we grant permission for visitors to speak. If there's anyone that would like to address council this evening, please step to the podium. No one this evening? Next in line are committee reports from 2016-2017 term. If any of you would like to make any comments about last year or what you see forthcoming, now would be the time to do it. We'll start with Economic Development, Mr. McKiever. You don't have to.
Hopefully, we improve our economy and hopefully, we get along, get things passed what the city wants, what the city needs also.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Awork is in here for finance, health and safety. Mr. Piper?
I left your grocery list and stuff in ten jobs.
Okay, thank you. Planning, Ms. Sack?
Nothing.
Public lands and buildings, Mr. Wireball?
Well, I think, I think it's on the public lands and buildings is also finance, but we're gonna have a big, big thing here coming up with these, this monies we need to repair the pool and the whole project that were kind of talked about during the budget, so we need to get on that hard, fast and hard, and spring will be here before you know it, I hope.
We hope.
No, I think that's gonna be one of our biggest things, is getting the park improvements done.
Thank you. Service, Mr. Trucca?
Hopefully.
By the way, we wanted to have you here with us this evening.
Oh, thank you.
And you're bright red, and you show up nicely, and you're comfortable, so we're glad it all went well in your backyard, council. Thank you for coming today.
Well, what hopefully service is gonna be looking forward to is a continuation of water line expansions to help the city of Visirus. Hopefully, we can help pay for the water plant, and the more, the more water we can sell, the easier it is to be on the rest of the citizens, so that's, hopefully, that will be our, one of our main priorities, as long as a lot of sewers, the mayor will be able to, we've done quite a few sewers this patch here, and we have a lot more sewers to go ahead, so hopefully, everybody will have a dry basement in the future.
Okay, thank you. Any questions for the mayor regarding traffic this last meeting? None? Okay. I need a motion to accept the report collectively.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Motion by Mr. McKiever, second by Ms. Sack to accept the committee reports collectively. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion passed. Report of city officers for the 2016-2017 term. Mayor Ester?
Thank you, Madam President, for the first report of a new term, of the new year. First of all, I want to start out by thanking retired councilmen Awork, Piper, and Ross for your service to the city. Much appreciated. We thank you for stepping up at a time when not a lot of people wanted to be on council, so we commend you for that. And certainly, I don't want to thank, I forget to thank, wanted to share, you served the city so well for her years, and I had to retire early this year because of some health issues in the family. To new council members that are about to enter, first of all, welcome to thank you very much for serving. I like the makeup that we've got, 2018. I want to say if your class was ranked like college football recruits, I would give you the top ranking, number one, just like Ohio State. You have already shown your ability to lead with your involvement in community organizations like Rotary, Kiwanis, and Broadworth Festival, and it's an impressive group coming in. Always keep in mind that we serve the citizens first, put their needs first, and things that are important to them first, like safe and clean neighborhoods, healthy business community, great parks, clean water, good utilities. We've made substantial progress in the last few years, and our administration looks forward to working with you on new projects that are on our horizon. One of them, that Mr. Trucca mentioned, expanding our water lines. Also, I should treat your college with the respect deserved. I don't expect that we always will agree on everything. We don't. We're like a family here, and, you know, we have disagreements, but I always present them in respectful tones. If you have questions for the administration that require research, we just ask you to give us a little bit of notice, so we can have the answer that night at council, which would benefit everybody sitting here, and also the people who are viewing us hopefully on TV in the near future. Voters have spoken last election. They voted for positive leadership, that you work with the administration and your constituents, as well as the business community, and they want to make, along with us, an example of what Visirus could be, one of the best small towns in the state, even the country. An effective member of council looks at micro and macro issues. Example, a micro issue would be doing our best to make sure utility costs are fair and reasonable, which is what we've been doing quite a while. But you almost look, you must also look at the future of our community, the macro charge, you know, look beyond the next six months or the next year. What is your vision for Visirus in five, 10, or 20 years in the future? We have to look at, recharge with looking ahead to the future. And I want you to think about those things. Think about the communities you might thrive through, and you'd like, get some ideas, talk to the leaders there. We don't have to reinvent the wheel here, but new leadership for the 2018 and beyond are, is going to require innovation and teamwork, and we just need to work to be able to sure that we make this a wonderful community to live in, and people like to live in, and want to move there. I ask you to also talk to your fellow Visirians, and above all, listen to what they have to say. You'll have much to learn from them. And one last charge, as Judge Lucel mentioned last week, may swear again ceremony, do not take criticism personally. You're in a position of leadership now, that means, you know, Facebook and Twitter, and maybe, you know, anonymous letter in the mail, may call you some names from now on in the end, don't take it personally, you know. Get me on that, and certainly don't hold back. Judge is only served to build hate, we're too small of a community to be, you know, to have hate take over, so be positive. I speak for our entire administration in thanking you for your service, and wishing you success in your new position. I look forward to leading Visirus to unite with all of you, all of the entire council. To our 12,000 residents, I would like to wish all residents a Happy New Year in the city. I pray that 2018 will be a banner year for all. One way we can be a better community is we make an effort to put others first. And here's just a couple of suggestions. Having intense cold weather like we're having right now, why don't you consider checking in on your neighbors, especially their elderly. Make sure everything's well, they have enough food. Another thing I think in the community we've gotten a little bit away from for some reason, that's taking pride in our sidewalks. I noticed over the last few days, quite a few people were out shoveling their sidewalks, but not everybody, so please make sure your sidewalks are shovelled, which shows concern for your neighborhood, and of course, your neighbors, and UPS drivers, postal workers. So let's try to regain that concern for our neighborhoods. And on that, I thank you, Madam President, and look forward to working with all of you.
Okay. Thank you. Any questions or comments for the mayor this evening? No one? The service director's not with us, the law director's not here. The auditor, we have before you, go ahead, Joyce.
You have a statement to cash position for on December 31st. There is one correction that needs to be made on this report. If you look, the fourth line down on 205, the UDMV license tax, for some reason, when we transferred into the new year, the outstanding encumbrance did not carry forward correctly. It shows $102 and some change. That should be $1,400, with an ending balance of $622,739.62. Once we got this figured out and got it corrected and reset, all the other reports were correct. This was the only one it affected, and then it was too late to run a new one, so I just wanted you to know about that change. I also handed out the revenue tallies. One change that I made was in the sewage disposal fund, which had to do with the fact that we did not get the bond anticipation note we thought we were going to get last year, so I reduced that revenue by $500,000, so that doesn't look quite so bad at the end of the year, as far as revenues go. There's also the income tax revenue comparisons, and in looking at that, in 2016, for the year, we were up 12%, and in 2017, we were down 12%. So basically, we were even with 2016, and the reason for that was a bump from one of our industries for taxes that they owed last year that they did not owe this year, so that, that made the big difference. I believe that's everything for this evening. I have no referrals or anything.
Okay, any questions for the auditor then? None? Okay. Before you, you have the treasurer's report for November of 2017. It was given to you at the last meeting. I need a motion to accept and file this report.
So moved.
Second. Motion by Mr. Piper, second by Mr. McKiever to accept and file a treasurer's report for November of 2017. All those in favor say aye. Opposed, say no. Motion passed. The chief, or police or fire chiefs are not with us. I need a motion to accept the city officers' reports.
So moved.
Motion by Ms. Sack, second by Mr. Trucca to accept the city officers' reports. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. Motion passed. Reports of any special committees of the 2016-2017 term? There are none. Any unfinished business from the 2016 or 2017 term that anyone would like to bring up at this time? No one? Okay. Then we have one piece of business to do. Mr. Piper?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Ross, would you please join me out front, please? We're gonna go around that way, not that.
What's that?
We're gonna go around and right into the middle, go where Steve is.
Oh, no.
Oh, yeah.
No, not you.
We always want to say thank you, and boy, it's been years that you've served. Steve, you started in 2008.
Over 20% of my life.
That means you're awfully young. But this is an appreciation of your service to the citizens of Visirus as a council member. We certainly do appreciate it, and thank you for everything that you brought to council.
Likewise.
And Dan was good enough to step in when Ms. Sheerick had to resign, and Dan, we want to thank you. So this makes you a member of the Fire Department, a retired member of the Fire Department.
1976.
Okay. A former mayor.
Yep.
And now retired from, from the city council. So we thank you for stepping in and helping us out when we needed the help.
It just keeps coming back.
Okay. So thank you both. Got a picture. Thank you.
Okay. I go.
And we also have a plaque for Mr. Awork and for Wanda Sheerick. Okay, what we need now is a motion to adjourn, sign a aye. A motion to adjourn, sign a aye, which means we're gonna adjourn for just a moment.
So moved.
Okay, Mr. Piper and Mr. Ross, do you want to second that motion? Dan?
Hey, Dan. Hey, Dan. She needs a second on the motion. They sent her.
Say aye, second.
Yeah, what was the motion?
You second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion passed. We'll adjourn for just a few moments here.
That's a secret school. Or we see you get something.
You're too young for the time.
Right. Yeah, 20% of the law.
Ageing council members?
20%. I beat up for 20%.
You're not really long.
Yeah, right.
You're the last seat over there. Kevin's over here. Doug, you're second seat over there.
Oh, okay. Close.
Would you give out a help hand?
Nice, Steve.
Stay around.
No, but it's not too hard to walk around.
Yeah.
If I think you're getting out of line, I'm just saying.
You're supposed to be mounted under there.
Yeah. I keep the handle down on my neck.
The wire on there, those people all down there, I need falling down. Okay. Okay. The new council is seated. The new council president is in the chair, that's me, Garnett Young, and I need to call to order the 2018-2019 council term members. Would you do the?
McKiever.
Here.
Myers.
Here.
Wireball.
Here.
Trucca.
Here.
Sack.
Here.
Foat.
Here.
Shaw.
Here.
Okay. The first order of business, which you have in your packet, is that we need to appoint the council clerk for the 2018-2019 term, so I need a motion to do that appointment for Clerk Todd Hill, and you have the legislation right in front of you, so I need to do this appointment, so for right now, we just need a motion and a second to do that.
So moved.
Motion by Ms. Sack, second by Mr. Trucca. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion passed. For consideration of proposed legislation for the first time.
Resolution number 2, 201, 2018. Appointing Todd Hill to fill the position of Visirus Council Clerk on a full-time, 40 hours per week basis throughout 2018 and 2019, at an hourly figure of $20 for 2018 and $21 for 2019, together with the available health insurance and sick leave entitlements, et cetera, for all non-union, non-elected, full-time, 40 hours per week city employees. Further, the clerk's 40 hours per week duty shall include his attendance at all regularly scheduled and specially called council meetings, and regularly scheduled and specially called committee meetings. Further, the clerk shall be paid compensation of one and one-half times the basic hourly rate for hours worked over 40 hours, when authorized by the council president. Set appointment retroactive to January 1, 2018, and declare any emergency.
Okay, thank you. I need a motion to accept this as the first reading.
So moved.
Second. Motion by Mr. McKiever, second by Mr. Wireball to accept this as the first reading. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion passed. We normally refer this back to Virginian Committee, which is the finance committee in the Sack. Would you, I'll refer it back to finance and ask for a report from you, okay? After, we ask for any public participation. Does the public like to address anything regarding this piece of legislation to council for the first time? None? Moving on. So the committee reports on pending legislation, Finance Committee?
Finance is favorable to resolution 201-2018, the appointment of Todd Hill to council clerk for 2018-2019 term.
Okay, I need a motion to accept this report?
So moved. Second.
Who is that? Okay. Until I get used to hearing your voice. A motion by Mr. Trucca, second by Mr. Foat to accept the report on the appointment of Todd Hill as council clerk for 2018-2019. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion passed. For further consideration of pending legislation, for the second and third reading of proposed resolution number 201-2018, do I hear a motion to suspend the rules, waive the reading of the caption and text, and declare an emergency?
So moved. Second.
McKiever.
Yes.
Myers.
Yes.
Wireball.
Yes.
Trucca.
Yes.
Sack.
Yes.
Foat.
Yes.
Shaw.
Yes.
Resolution number 201-2018.
Do I hear a motion to adopt proposed resolution 201-2018?
So moved.
Second.
Wireball.
Yes.
Sack.
Yes.
Foat.
Yes.
Shaw.
Yes.
McKiever.
Yes.
Myers.
Yes.
Trucca.
Yes.
Resolution number 201-2018.
Resolution number 201-2018 is duly adopted. Thank you. We don't need a recess, I believe, at this time. I usually have calls in here. Next item, the council, the new council for 2018-2019 term, we need nominations for council president pro town. Those would be for the times when the council president is unavailable to be here, that they would sit in the president's chair and run the meeting. So do I have a nomination, please?
I don't make, Bruce Trucca.
Mr. Trucca? Nominated by Mr. McKiever. Any other nominations? Okay, I need a motion to close the nominations.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Motion by Ms. Sack. I need a motion then to accept Bruce Trucca as the president pro town.
So moved.
Mr. Myers?
Second.
Mr. Wireball?
One.
Motion by Mr. Myers, second by Mr. Wireball to accept Mr. Trucca as president pro town. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion passed. So our council pro, uh, president pro town is Mr. Trucca. Thank you. Committee appointments, so let's continue on down the packet. It's this page here that we'll be looking at. Planning Committee. Mark McKiever, chairman, Monica Sack, Bruce Trucca, Kevin Myers. Economic Development Committee. Doug Foat, chairman, Monica Sack, Dan Wireball, Mark McKiever. Public Lands and Buildings. Dan Wireball, chairman, Bruce Trucca, Doug Foat, Mark McKiever. Finance. Monica Sack, chairman, Dan Wireball, Kevin Myers, Andy Shaw. Service. Bruce Trucca, chairman, Dan Wireball, Doug Foat, Andy Shaw. Health and Safety Committee. Kevin Myers, chairman, Mark McKiever, Bruce Trucca, and Andy Shaw. Any discussion about the committees? If not, I need a motion to accept the committee, the committee appointments.
So moved.
That was Mr. McKiever. Second?
Second.
Mr. Foat? Motion by Mr. McKiever, second by Mr. Foat to accept the committee appointments. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion passed. Okay, now we move on to boards and appointments. You have two papers here. One is the appointments of the committees as they stood the previous year, and then this other sheet here, we'll, we'll use them both in conjunction. The Crawford County Health District, Mr. Wireball was appointed to a five-year term a couple of years ago, I believe it was in, uh...
That was in March.
In March, just in March of this year. And it's a five-year term, and he's willing to continue in that position. There really is nothing else required of that position, other than a council member is served on it. It's one of the more lengthy meetings that we have each month, and they do meet each month. For the Board of Zoning Appeals, that's the chairman of the Plating Committee, so that would be Mr. McKiever. For the Central Joint Ambulance District, it's Chair of the Health and Safety Committee, that would be Mr. Myers. Family and Children First Council. We need a volunteer for that one. That's a, a meeting that's held monthly, no, quarterly, I believe now. It's held quarterly, and it can be lengthy. It's always on a Monday morning, like at nine or 10 o'clock. It's one of the toughest to get anyone to, because I know it interferes with, with work hours. Is there anyone that would have the ability to attend to that? Mr. Shaw?
I'll, I'll assist.
Okay, thank you. Tourism and Visitors Bureau, Mr. Trucca was on it, didn't, and it's difficult for him with his work schedule, so, Mr. Myers, is that okay for you? The Crawford County Park District, Mr. Trucca's served on that for many, many years, and I talked with Chief Keppke, they're both going to stay on Park District. That's the third Thursday of every month, it's either 7:30 or 8:00 in the morning, isn't it?
7:30 in the morning.
7:30 in the morning. And they vow to have you out of there by nine, if I recall.
Right. That's narrative.
Okay. The Safety Team for Visirus Employees. Currently, it's Mr. Wireball? Is that?
Yeah, I'm staying at that.
Okay.
I haven't had a meeting in years.
I know, they haven't. It's not one that meets for a while.
I'm ready.
Time to committee, Eli. The Community Improvement Corporation is the economic development chair, so Mr. Foat, that's yours unless there's some reason you can't. It's usually during the day, and it's not, not a real long meeting, okay? The Flood Plan Appeals Board, it takes a member of the Plating Committee. I picked Ms. Sack for that. They don't meet very often either. Plating Committee Chair, yes. So that is yours. Do you think that will work? If not, we'll discuss, you bring it to me, and we'll bring it back to council if we need to put somebody else on it, okay? The Stormwater Utility Appeals Board is the service chairman. Mr. Trucca, are you still good for that one?
I'm still good.
Okay. Volunteer Firefighters Dependents, and that one doesn't meet very often at all. McKiever, Mr. McKiever, Mr. Shaw?
We didn't meet at all in two years.
You didn't meet at all that year.
Two years.
Okay, the CRA Housing Council. I need the two volunteers, and I selected Mr. Foat and Mr. Wireball, and that's another one that doesn't meet very often at all. I think that...
When they do, we'll be ready.
You will be, okay. And the Tax Incentive Review Council, this one does have a meeting every year, and Mr. Foat, it's the economic chairman, development chairman, you're on that committee?
Only once a year.
Yeah, just one time a year. And the Sire City Housing Advisory Committee, I think I've been on that for a while, and it doesn't meet very often. I don't think it met at all last year. Does somebody else want to sit in on that if they do have a meeting? It's, if this... And the Tax Incentive Review Council, this one does have a meeting every year. And Mr. Foe, it's the economic chairman, development chairman, you're on that committee?
It's only once a year.
Oh, yeah, just one time a year. And the City Housing Advisory Committee, I think I've been on that for a while, and it doesn't meet very often. I don't think it met at all last year. Does somebody else want to sit in on that, if they do have a meeting? It's, if this is a law, as I recall, this is the one where agents, all the different agencies come together to, to do this, and then do it like every couple of years, or three years, or something like that. Does anyone else want to volunteer? Boy, I talked you all out of that one, didn't I? Okay, I'll do that one. Okay, so those are our other committees. We didn't need to do anything with the Records Commission. That's an appointment by the mayor, and he has former Mayor Ockerman on that one right now. And the, I think that's about all of them. We did away with the Crawford County Regional Plating Commission, they disbanded, so that takes care of all of those. So, we'll come to that one. Let's do these boards and commissions first, okay? Any other discussion you want to have about that? If not, I need a motion to accept the appointments to the various boards and commissions.
So moved. Second.
Motion by Mr. Trucca, second by Mr. Shaw. All those in favor of accepting the appointments to the various boards and commissions, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion passed. The next thing that we have in here is the letter that we just received from the Bucyrs Public Library. If you'd read that, of course, please. This was in the date that we received it last month, it's addressed to Bucyrs City Council and the council president. Dear City Council Members, the Bucyrs Public Library Board Trustees has three board members whose terms will expire on December 31, 2017, and they are Stan Hussey, Margaret Thornton, and Peter Maynard. Mr. Maynard has requested to continue on board. However, Mr. Hussey and Mrs. Thornton have resigned, and the board accepted their resignations back to December 31, 2017. The Bucyrs Public Library Board of Trustees would like the Bucyrs City Council to approve Mr. Maynard for a term of three years, and appoint two of the following persons as replacements for Mr. Hussey and Mrs. Thornton. And those following persons are Gerald Dolan, 381 Oak Drive in Bucyrs, Donna Moore, 1529 Bradbury Court in Bucyrs, Hannah Jacobs, 629 Ridge Avenue in Bucyrs, and Carissa Fankhauser, 427 East Southern Avenue in Bucyrs. Thank you, Brendan Kreider, Director of Bucyrs Public Library. Okay, I would like to put this in the Economic Development Committee. We'll discuss it, we can discuss it in committee, and if, Mr. Foe, I think that's you. Get some information, if you would, about each of these people, and you can have a discussion about it Thursday evening, and it is our regular committee meetings, okay? So I need a motion then to put this in economic development.
So moved.
Second by Ms. Sac. Motion by Mr. McKeever, second by Ms. Sac to put the library board members' terms into economic development. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Okay, the motion passed. Thank you very much. Now we move on to Rules of Council. Mr. McKeever and Mr. Wirebaugh, we sat down with the, the mayor and the law director, correct?
Yes.
And went over the rules of council, and this was given to you a week ago, I believe it was. Everything that is in red is what's to replace what's been struck out, so, uh... Do you want us to read all of these tonight, Mr. Trucca?
No, I was just wanting to be able to speak to it, if I may. But I'll probably read.
Okay. We can go through, you want us to read this, that, so everybody can hear all these rules? I think it'd be a good idea. You're reading. A, citizen participation. Just read what the new one will be. Right. Number one, any man entering the council chambers is to remove his hat unless hat is worn for medical reasons. Two, all visitors are asked to arrive at least 15 minutes prior to opening of the council meeting, so they may sign a visitor attendance sheet. Three, while the council is in session, the members must preserve order and decorum, and the members shall neither by conversation or otherwise delay or interrupt the proceedings or the peace of the council, or disturb any member while speaking, or refuse to obey the orders of council, or its presiding officer, except as otherwise herein provided. Four, any person making personal, impertinent, or slanderous remarks or who shall become boisterous or physically threatening the members of council, the administration, and others in attendance while addressing council, shall be forthwith by the presiding officer or from further audience before council and can be removed from council chambers unless permission to continue to be granted by a two-thirds vote of council. Five, the chief of police or such member or members of the police department, as he may designate, shall be sergeant in arms at council meetings. He or they shall carry out all orders and instructions given by the presiding officer for the purpose of maintaining order and decorum at the council meeting. Six, all visitors shall address council from the podium provided in council chambers, and no visitor will be permitted to speak to council from his or her chair in the audience. Seven persons other than members of council and senior officers shall not be permitted to address council except upon introduction by the presiding officer. Each citizen must identify himself in his residential address for purpose of the public record. Eight, each individual addressing council is asked to project his or her voice so the entire council can hear the speaker. Number nine, all addressing council from the podium must face council. Number 10, each visitor addressing council shall speak to council on one subject only. He or she cannot drift from one subject to another for a maximum of three minutes unless prior arrangements are made. Number 11, visitors addressing council have three opportunities to address issues. First, at the beginning of the meeting. Second, after all committee and administration reports have been read. And third, after the first reading of the proposed legislation has been accepted by council. Number 12, time shall be allotted to each speaker addressing council at the discretion of the council president. Number 13, if any visitor is speaking or otherwise shall violate any rules of council, the presiding officer or any council member shall call him to order. The presiding officer, upon hearing an explanation of the, of the visitor, must decide on point of order. If the decision shall be in favor of the citizen called to order while speaking, he or she shall be able to proceed. Otherwise, he shall not be able to proceed with the speech. Number 14, all speakers shall comply with council rules. Section B, citizen council participation. Number one, no person except members of council or other designated city official shall be admitted within the running of council chambers except during the recess period. Number two, no council member or any other designated city official seated within the council chamber railing is permitted to have any food or drink on the council tables while conducting business for the city, with the exception of the clerk of council, who is permitted to have water only. Number three, all council members and any other designated city official seated within the council chamber railing is expected to wear business attire, gentlemen, that suit, sports coat, or sweater with necktie or turtleneck; ladies, that suit, dress, or appropriate outfit during the months of November through February, and business casual attire during the months of March through October while conducting business for the city. Business casual attire is acceptable for committee meetings, council committee meetings year-round. Number four, while each council member and/or city officer has the right to speak, he or she must request this right by addressing the president of council. Upon being recognized, he or she may proceed. Number five, when a council member and/or city officer desires to address the council, they shall address the chair by saying, "Mr. President slash Madam President." If the individual is entitled to the floor, the presiding officer recognizes that fact by announcing the member's name. When two or more members address the chair at the same time, the president of council shall name the member entitled to speak first. Number six, no member of council and/or city officer may filibuster. Number seven, council members and/or city officers, officers shall speak on any subject matter in a succinct manner. Number eight, no members of council and/or other designated city officials seated within the running of council chambers shall leave council chambers during sessions without the, being granted by the president. Number nine, the president of council may upon his or her own discretion or upon the application of any member of council or any other designated city official seated within the running of council chambers determine a recess period as he or she, he or she deems necessary. Number 10, a majority of a four-member council committee shall be present to conduct business at a committee, committee meeting. Number 11, all committee chairpersons are asked to submit a, submit agenda items for their respective meetings to the council clerk for discussion with the council clerk what information is necessary for the meeting prior to all committee meetings. The council clerk will notify the administration, which is mayor, service safety director, auditor, and law director of the proposed agenda, so proper documentation can be provided for the issues to be discussed, and will notify the media of proposed discussion items. Number 12, council committee members shall not call any executive sessions at committee meetings unless the council president or the law director or his designee are present. And section C, this is miscellaneous. Number one, all visitors, council persons, and administration members are asked to silence all electronic devices while council is in session. Number two, all communications, reports, and minutes from members of the council shall be submitted in electronic format by Microsoft Word to the council clerk along with signing sheets and requests for legislation by noon on Monday following the joint regular council committee meeting. Reports from the city officers shall be submitted in electronic form to the clerk of council attending of the day of the council meeting. Number three, all council committee chairpersons are responsible for their own committee minutes. If a meeting is electronically recorded, the recording shall be given to the council clerk with a date of committee named noted. A recording shall be retained in the clerk of council office for three months and then be destroyed. Number four, all committee referrals shall be made by the president of council during the council meeting. If an emergency issue arises, the council president may bypass the formal committee referral process and assign the emergency issue to a proper committee for consideration or without study. Number five, all letters of correspondence and petitions dealing only with the city government that are submitted to council for presentation must include the name and address of the author. In order to be read at a public council meeting, no anonymous letters will be read. Number six, all correspondence and petitions for each respective council meeting shall be received by the clerk of council by 12 noon on the Friday preceding the scheduled council meeting. Number seven, the council shall have the exclusive right to the use of the council chambers for council or committee meetings, although council chambers may be used by others upon permission of the clerk of council when there is no conflict with council use. The clerk of council shall notify all council members when scheduled council chambers for a meeting or other than council or committee meetings. Number eight, the clerk of council shall be responsible for and control the power fund designated for elected officials, the clerk of council, and mayor staff members in the event of a serious illness, hospitalization, and/or death of an immediate family member, i.e., spouse, child, parent, grandparents, step-parents, step-child, grandchild, step-grandchild, brother or sister. Constitutionist senate funds shall be voluntary. Number nine, the president pro town and clerk of council shall be elected by a two-thirds vote of council as determined on the Ohio Advice Code 731.04. Number 10, council rules may be amended or altered or new rules adopted at any regular meeting of council or on the report of a proper committee to which the subject has been previously referred by the vote of the majority of all members elected council. Number 11, it shall be the duty of the president of council to see that all rules pertaining to his or her office are enforced. Number 12, rules of procedure of council of the city of Bucyrs operating under a statutory form of government and formally adopted by the Bucyrs to be codified ordinance do not continue from term to term, but must be re-adapted by succeeding councils. And finally, number 13, all council rules shall be on file in the court of council office. Yeah, thinking back on number six, under miscellaneous, all correspondence and petitions for each respective council meeting shall be received by the clerk of council by noon and should be Monday instead of Friday. So while we're addressing this, I need a motion to, to amend this, to Monday, on number six.
So moved. Second.
Mr. Myers and Mr. Foe?
Foe.
Motion by Mr. Myers, second by Mr. Foe to amend, under miscellaneous, item number six, that petitions or correspondence need to be with the council clerk by noon on Monday. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Okay, motion passed. Okay, now a discussion. Mr. Trucca?
Madam President, may I read from my notes?
Of course.
A letter to all of us. I'd like to speak to a new proposed time reduction. The citizens of Bucyrs are allowed to speak at the podium at the start of the Bucyrs City Council meeting. The citizens of Bucyrs that come to Bucyrs City Council meetings are very passionate about the topics they wish to have their elected officials to be made aware of and help to solve. These people are everyday citizens, neighbors, friends, people who elected us as their voice, people who are nervous and anxious speaking at the podium and are hurting. We need to put ourselves in their shoes. They want someone with compassion to listen to them. When we, as council people, talk to our family members, we state that you only have three minutes to talk to me about your concerns. We, as council people, need to ask ourselves, is our time more important than the citizens that elected us to be their voice in their everyday lives? I believe three minutes is too short for our citizens of Bucyrs to speak at the city council meetings, and I would rather see it to be at least five minutes. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Trucca. Comments? Those around the committee, Mr. Wirebaugh?
Well, yeah, my only comment, and I might guess that either, but, you know, we've got four people here, we got today, so if each of them, it's not, not real long, but you know, like when we had the outside dining, and there was, and when we were doing the tax increase, income tax increase, we had a lot of people, and a lot of them would come up and, and repeat the same things, you know, and that's fine. And, and I think we're always open for a phone call. I'm always open for a phone call. If you want to talk to somebody longer than three minutes or five minutes, call me up, you know, email me, write me a letter. So, I understand the three minutes or four, five minutes, but I also understand we can't, when we get a big crowd like that, it's, that's kind of what it is. And I, I really don't think sys, systems will let, let them talk five or, five or six minutes, you know? She's not going to cut anybody off if you...
I don't think I've done that in the last six years.
Yeah, I, I have, yeah, I have. So, I mean, it's one of those things that, you know, we keep it three, two, or, or, you know, five isn't that much different than three. That's just my, my take on it, so, anyone else?
Anyone else?
Madam President?
Yes.
I actually received a couple of emails from another concerned citizen today. I shared those with Mr. Hill, which he said he had saw as well, where they had done a study of a few other surrounding cities and the time limits that they have. Some cities have no time limit, some have a three minute, three-minute time limit, some have a five-minute time limit, so...
Some have unlimited, yeah.
Yes, exactly.
Very... Mr. McKeever?
I agree with Dan. It's not that we're, it's in case we have a large crowd, I mean, we have, we have six people in the audience. If they take longer than three minutes, it isn't going to kill us, but if we have a full house, it's just a guideline. We're not, you know, I, you know, if it gets to the point where we have to, we have to draw a line somewhere, and you can get a lot across in three minutes. And you can say, you know, I'm concerned, I'm just saying. That's just my opinion, I...
Madam President, something I brought up a while back, and it may help, to help with this issue too, is, is I've heard that we used to have ward meetings where your constituents would come in and sit down with your ward representative and go over things that they were voiced and concerned about, and maybe if we do that, that helps to, you know, give the three-minute time limit here, but you still have the ability to, you know, once a month meet with your ward representative to voice your opinions and your concerns for an hour, or say, you just, you know, each representative sits with their constituents for an hour, give an hour of your time to sit, listen, have a discussion, whatever the case may be.
Okay, I believe Mr. Trucca brought that up at a previous meeting about bringing award meetings back, yes. Anyone else for comments? Okay, right now, what we're looking at is if you want to amend this, or do you want to accept it as it is right now? So I need a motion, one way or the other.
I agree with Madam President.
Yes?
Madam President, I, I move to amend it to five minutes for, for a good reason being that it's, it's going to be in writing, and at least give the people five minutes to talk. And as many peoples that used, I suppose, I'm sorry.
Yes, you're fine, you're making motion.
As many peoples that used to come to city council, or do come to council, and actually do come to the podium, it's very rare that we do have any people that come to city council on a regular basis and actually have the guts to come up to the podium and talk to us. And, and it's really a trying time for these people. So, I, I'd like to have that motion as five minutes, please.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Myers? Okay, the council rules say that it takes a majority for it to pass. So all those in favor of changing item 10, under citizen participation, from three minutes to five minutes, say, uh, hands up, that's going to be easier than me listening. One, two, three. Okay, those opposed? One, two, three, four. One, two, three, four. Okay, so the motion does not pass. Then I need a motion to accept the rules of council as they're presented here then, with the one amendment to that being a Monday instead of a Friday.
So move.
Mr. McKeever? Second?
Second.
And Mr. Wirebaugh? All those in favor of accepting the rules of council as presented with the one amendment, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no.
No.
Okay, noted. Motion passed, thank you. This is a time where we grant permission for visitors to speak. Does anyone wish to address council this evening? State your name and address, please.
Kurt Fanghauser, sixteen seventy-five South Sandusky. And am I currently under the three-minute rule?
You most certainly are.
Okay, I think Vicki DeShawn sent an email to council to have it addressed as a whole, but I didn't see that. I'm assuming Mr. Hill got the email, and usually Mr. Hill supposedly, anytime somebody addresses council, he always reads it at the meeting.
Okay, this was part of, oh, it's coming up under communications and petitions, the next thing that we're going to do.
Well, it sounds like it's a little too late, though. But the other thing I want to say about the committee designations is nothing against Mr. Shaw or Mr. Myers, but I could potentially, with them both working in the same building, we may be getting ourselves in trouble here as far as if a quorum of one other person on that committee walks in the building, did a meeting happen or something like that. So I don't want to see the city getting in trouble like they haven't passed, and I just think that maybe that might need to be looked at.
Yeah, I think they are more than aware of what is required of them, and I think that as members of the community and outstanding members of the community, they will take that into consideration. Thank you. Moving on to communications and petitions.
We have one letter addressed to Bussiris City Council dated December twenty-nine, twenty-seventeen regarding council rules of procedure to council. While listening to the twelve thirteen seventeen, that's December thirteen, twenty-seventeen, audio recording of the ad hoc committee meeting of council rules of procedure, the topic of establishing a time limit for visitors to speak was discussed. Time limits of three minutes and ten minutes were mentioned during the meeting. A decision was made by the committee to give visitors three minutes to speak unless prior arrangements were made. Because there was no mention of the committee having contacted other Ohio State councils to secure its time limit, if any, for visitors to speak, I randomly contacted Ohio City councils and attached a detailed continuing city name, person contacted, method of contact, email or call, position of person contacted, response on time limit for visitors to speak, and additional comments, if any, made by the person contacted. You will note that of the twenty responses received or secured, eight councils allow visitors five minutes to speak, six councils allow visitors three minutes to speak, two councils allow visitors two minutes to speak, three councils have no time limit, and one council has nothing in writing. It would be appreciated if council would take this attached list into consideration when deciding the time limit to place on visitors to speak at the Bussiris City Council meetings. Thank you, Vicki Ellen DeShawn, eleven oh eight Hillcrest Drive, Bussiris. And there is an attachment here that are a tribute of the twenty council members, twenty city councils that she contacted. I believe these are all city councils.
Okay.
And that is the only communication.
I need a motion to accept and file as communication.
So move.
Second. Motion by Mr. Myers, second by Mr. Wirebaugh. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion passed. Well, this is where we're breaking down through a regular agenda now, so sort of your first time through this regular agenda, and we have our standing committee reports, which generally take place at this time. So we have our new chairman of these committees, and if the new chairman have anything that they would like to say, economic development, Mr. Fote?
Not at this time.
Okay. Finance, Ms. Sack? Health and safety, Mr. Myers? Planning, Mr. McKeever?
No, ma'am.
I find that hard to believe. Public lands and buildings, Mr. Wirebaugh?
Yes.
Okay. Service, Mr. Truca?
We'll be, we'll be looking to hear from Mayor Reeser here shortly and start talking to us about all the sewers and all the good things that are going to be happening on Point Street.
Yes, that one's coming up here. Okay, any traffic issues? Anyone wants to bring up this evening? We have three new members. Have you been getting phone calls about anything specific about traffic? I noticed the other day that I think every size truck that we own had a plow on the front of it, and they were either in an alley or going down a side street or going down a main street, and I noticed them, and I wondered why, they were putting salt down the parking lanes, I'm thinking where I was looking, on Rensselaer Street. And they said as the temperatures start to come up during the day a little bit, it can do a little bit of work to get rid of all that that's there. So any other comments or questions about traffic? Not at this time? Oh, I'm sorry.
I did have a complaint from a person who operated business, was complaining about on Christmas Eve, there was no trucks out to take care of the main street. I did not witness it. I'm just saying. And she addressed her concern that with her business.
I, yeah.
I'm just letting you know, they were concerned about that, and, you know, they, she was addressing the problem and what she thought was the problem, and I, you know, I said I'd bring it up for her. And the other question I have, you know my concern about the Sandusky Avenue, the downtown lights, I'm still, do not like the square the way it's set up and the timings, so I'm, I'm still letting you know, I'm still, I have a lot of people who still hit me up, even my father complains every time I see him.
At least he's not backing up, you know, unless we have a train, you know, so.
Well, I'm just saying, there have been times that it's hard to get through because I can even tell you, I was trying to, I was heading east on Rensselaer to make a left-hand turn onto Sandusky to go north. Semi, the light turned yellow, the semi decided to go across and block the intersection. So, because he was waiting for the light to change because.
He got caught in the middle.
No, he deliberately went, he knew he should have waited, but it was still backup, backup traffic. So I just bring that up, I'm still.
We're going up to the next traffic commission again.
That'd be great.
Okay, we don't need a motion, anything else before I move on? We don't need anything, we had no Minnesota actual reports. Mayor, do you have anything else to say to this?
Yeah, a couple things since it was brought up about the snowplow, you know our guys were out this Saturday, and then again on Sunday, you know, they were out over the weekend, and that's, you know, especially there were guys out during the Ohio State game, too, so thank you for that, that was hard to do. So I heard about in front of my house, plowed at midnight, and, you know, it's, you know, we're glad that they answered the call, so. The other thing, too, is it's, tis the season for water main breaks. Rest assured that we have a water main break, we have to issue a boil advisory, it has nothing to do with the new water plant, it's because the water main is broken and water line is broken and required by the EPA to put a boil advisory. You can sign up for those alerts, too, if you like, and get an alert on your cell phone. I can't quite remember the website now, remember what the website is, John? It's Conover County EMA.
We've got a link on our website.
We'll see if Bussiris website. You could get those texts if you would like this. And cold weather brings these out, so we had two more today. Had a couple over the weekend, so we've been doing a good job, one of us, so. When it warms up, we won't have to worry about it, but unfortunately, we're probably going to have some more this week.
And really compliments downstairs to the utility office, because my neighbor that lives on the corner of East and Southern Avenue, when the weather gets really, really cold like this, they call him and they tell him, you know, because they know the location of the drops and everything else, that his has frozen before. So they call him and tell him, you know, let some water keep running through your, through your house that, so it doesn't get a chance to freeze in the pipes. So compliments to them for keeping that list downstairs, and I know that there are quite a few people that they call in and notified about that.
The last thing we want to do is, is, you know, bill somebody a large amount of money because their pipes burst. It's bad enough your pipes burst, you know. So try to keep water running, it's going to get even colder this week, day and weekend, so if you, you know, need to insulate around the pipes, do that, if you need a little drip, do that also.
Yeah. If you leave them drip, just make sure you call down to the water, the utility office and tell them what you're doing ahead of time. Okay? Okay, moving on then, reported city officers, we're down to the statement of cash position that the auditor just presented to us dated December the thirty-first, twenty-seventeen. We need to accept that as it is. Oh, okay, oh, this is the one, okay. Okay, so we'll wait until the next meeting to accept that one, okay? We have nothing else from, and I know I put legislation somewhat real good, okay? We need a motion then to accept the city officer's report.
So move.
Second. Mr. McKeever and Mr. Fote? Motion by Mr. McKeever, second by Mr. Fote to accept the city officer's report. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. This is for visitors regarding reports of standing or special committees and the city officers, if anyone wants to address council this evening? No one? For consideration of proposed legislation for the first time.
Resolution number two hundred and two, twenty-eighteen. The following final resolution enacted by the City of Bussiris, Ohio, hereinafter referred to as the legislation authority slash local public agency or LPA in the matter of the city described project and declaring an emergency. Here resolved by the council of the City of Bussiris, State of Ohio, two hundred and one members elected there to concur in, now therefore being ordained by the City of Bussiris of Conover County, Ohio, section one. Project description, PID number nine four one four seven. Whereas on the sixteenth day of June, twenty-fifteen, the LPA enacted legislation proposing cooperation with the director of transportation for the described project. The project consists of the mill and pave of State Route ninety-eight from State Route four to the Bussiris North Corporation Line, work to also include curb and gutter replacement and sidewalk replacement lying within the city of Bussiris and section two. Whereas the LPA shall cooperate with the director of transportation, that's the Ohio Director of Transportation, in the above described project as follows. The city agrees to assume and bear one hundred percent of the entire cost of the improvement within the city limits, less the amount of federal aid funds set aside by the Director of Transportation, or the financing of this improvement from funds allocated by the Federal Highway Administration, U.S. Department of Transportation. The share of the cost of the LPA is now estimated in the amount of eight hundred and sixty-five thousand, four hundred and sixty-eight dollars in construction costs and twenty-four thousand, eight hundred and thirty-two dollars and seventy-four cents in engineering costs, but said estimated amount is to be adjusted in order that the LPA's ultimate share of said improvement shall correspond with said percentages of actual cost when said actual costs are determined. And it goes on from there.
Okay. So the, this was something that we did back in, what was it, the date was in here, June, and this is the Point Street project. You're all aware that this goes back a ways because it was supposed to be done in twenty-fifteen, and it's going for bid on January the twenty-fifth, like maybe this, of twenty-eighteen, and so it should be starting in the early summer, late spring, early summer, once they get their bids in. And so we had to do this to readjust the numbers because the original was nine hundred and eleven thousand dollars in construction costs and thirty-some thousand dollars in engineering costs. But those were just estimates by them. What we have now are the engineers' estimates that are included in this legislation. This probably won't be exactly what is bid because that will be then the final number that comes in as to what our cost is, and we will bring that back to you. But this piece of legislation is required by Ohio Department of Transportation, we have to have it to them Thursday, Thursday of this week, along with a check that the auditor is busily getting everything in place so that he can, we have to put that check in deposit with them. So that's what this legislation is about, it's about that same project, but now it's with engineers' costs and things in it, so this is what we're asking you to pass this time. Okay, I need to accept this then as the first reading?
So move.
Mr. Fote, second by.
Second.
Mr. Wirebaugh? Motion by Mr. Fote, second by Mr. Wirebaugh to accept this as the first reading, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion passed. I need to refer this back to this originated in the planning committee. This is where we have public participation. Any member of the general public may present their input or comments on legislation that has been read for the first time. Does anyone wish to address council this evening? No one? Okay, committee reports on pending resolutions. Planning Committee?
Committee is, planning committee is in favor of resolution two oh two, twenty-eighteen, paving and rehab of State Route ninety-eight.
Okay, thank you very much. I need a motion to accept this report?
So move.
Second?
Second.
Motion by Mr. Fote, second by Mr. Myers to accept the report, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. Motion passed. For further consideration of pending legislation, for the second and third readings, a proposed resolution number two oh two dash twenty-eighteen, which is the paving and rehab of State Route ninety-eight in the city limits, do I hear a motion to suspend the rules, waive the reading of the caption and text, and declare it an emergency?
So move.
Second.
Wirebaugh?
Yes.
Sack?
Yes.
Fote?
Yes.
Shaw?
Yes.
McKeever?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Truca?
Yes.
Resolution number two oh, two zero two, twenty-eighteen.
Do I hear a motion to adopt proposed resolution two oh two dash twenty-eighteen?
So move. Second. McKeever?
Yes.
Fote?
Yes.
Shaw?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Wirebaugh?
Yes.
Truca?
Yes.
Sack?
Yes.
Resolution number two oh two dash twenty-eighteen is duly adopted. Thank you. Be good to get that project done, and why do you did a lot of the work with the hell hung holes and all that ahead of time?
Yeah, it's been, it's been ten years, it's been amazing, ten, ten years, yeah.
Okay, old and unfinished business. The open project lists are, and the new members' packets, you receive those, and the, we'll have new packets for you at the end of the month. We usually do them, they come out in every month that has a fifth Tuesday in it, is when they usually come out, okay? But at any time, you can request any information you know from the clerk. Anything else under old and unfinished business to be brought up this evening? Okay, under new and miscellaneous business, we have Monday, January the fifteenth, it's Martin Luther King Junior Day, the city offices will be open on that day, and where is that announcement for Patrolman Caldwell? Do I have that? Bussiris Police Patrol Officer Sam Caldwell will retire on Friday, January fifth, after twenty-six years of service. There will be a lunch for Sam at noon on Friday for those who want to wish him well. So this Friday, January fifth, if you got a chance going in and thanking twenty-six years as a police officer in Bussiris, we're so glad to see him move on and enjoy his retirement or whatever he's planning on doing next. So he served the city well. Other item under new business, new email addresses were handed out, and I think everybody has their new email address, for everybody out there. What we did is, we changed it from being word one, word two, word three, like that. It is now the person's first name and first initial and last name, so I am eslove@cityofbussirisoh.us. M. McKeever@cityofbussirisoh.us, so, and so on. So my understanding is all, any emails that were currently under an old email address have been forwarded to your new email address. So if you have any trouble signing in or anything like that, just contact the council clerk. Okay, anything else as far as new business is concerned? Okay, we don't need to excuse anyone here, we're all here tonight. Joint regular committee meetings, our referrals from this council meeting, and any open project list items may be discussed during the committee meetings this Thursday at six P.M.
We just have one referral, that is from council of economic development, that is the library appointments, Bussiris Public Library, that's all we have.
And if any of you, for your committees, want to bring any item up from your open project list, please notify the council clerk. We have to, we post that twenty-four hours ahead of the meeting so that everybody knows what's going to be discussed at those committee meetings, okay? The next WBCO radio program is on Thursday, January fourth, Mr. McKeever, you're to be there, correct?
Yes.
Okay. Wednesday, January the tenth, is the auditor, Joy Schiffer, to appear, okay? And Tuesday, January the twenty-third, the Water Superintendent, Terry Spiegel, will be there, so telling about different parts of the city and how they all work. By the way, I think mention needs to be made of the fact that this weekend, in By the way, I think mention needs to be made of the fact that this weekend, in the Bussiris newspaper, the Service Safety Director was in there talking about his job and the things that he does as Service Safety Director, and I think there's going to be at least one more installment, possibly two more, in there about items that he wanted to bring to the public about his job as Service Safety Director. So those appear on the Saturday, and Saturday newspaper, and thank you to Mary Fox, who is in charge of that and takes care of it. I need a motion then to adjourn, if you would, please.
So move.
Second.
Motion by Mr. McKeever, second by Mr. Trucca to adjourn, and we are adjourned at eight eleven P.M.